Good evening, everyone. I will call the Monday, August 12th, meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. John, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a special presentation regarding the Alzheimer's Walk September of this year. Christina, which Christina? Nardekia? Christina? This Christine? Pass this down to her. Here you go.
We have Colleen Will here.
Colleen Will is here. Colleen, where are you?
This is a big group.
Bring you and all the people that came with you up here. We know you know how to walk, because you've been doing it. So walk on up here.
All right. How's everybody tonight?
Christina, take it away.
I will. Let me get everybody up here first. Wherever you'd like to be. This is your show. Well, welcome this evening. So we have a proclamation for you, so thank you for allowing me to read this. Whereas the 2019 Walk to End Alzheimer's will take place on Sunday, September 22nd, at Huntington Park, and whereas held annually in more than 600 communities nationwide, the Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's is the world's largest event to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. And whereas anyone can help with the mission by registering as a team captain, team member or individual for the walk, and by raising funds and awareness, and whereas every 65 seconds, an individual develops Alzheimer's disease, which is the most expensive disease in America, costing the nation $290 billion this year alone, and whereas a degenerative disease, Alzheimer's, is thought to begin 20 years before symptoms arise, and affects 5.8 million Americans and 220,000 Ohioans. And whereas recognizing events like the Walk to End Alzheimer's provides an opportunity to promote and join the global conversation about Alzheimer's disease as a public health crisis, and whereas recognizing events, oh whoops, caregiving for individuals with Alzheimer's disease often takes an enormous toll on family members, caregivers themselves often suffer more stress, depression, and health problems than caregivers of people with other illnesses. And whereas we recognize the important role the Alzheimer's Association Central Ohio Chapter plays in meeting the needs of people affected by Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia through family and clinical support, early detection and diagnosis of disease education, advocacy, and research. Now therefore, he, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby encourage Dublin residents to participate in the 2019 Walk to End Alzheimer's and raise awareness in the hope of eradicating this cruel and devastating illness. Sign this 12th day of August 2019, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor. I'm going to come around and present this to you. (applause). How do you present? President of Dublin, so thank you very much for all of the work that you do, and I know we're going to want to get some pictures. You guys are going to squeeze together.
Thank you.
So thank you for all the work that you do. You need some more?
A little.
Yes. Let's pretend like we're looking to love each other. (laughter).
Absolutely. Thank you. Colleen, do you want to comment at all? Do you want to say anything while you're up here? If there's anything that you want to say? Hi, how are you? It's nice to see you.
Very nice to see you.
Thanks for coming in.
Hi.
You're very welcome. My hands are cold.
Yes, you're okay.
Yes, they are.
She'll stay all morning.
She's welcome to.
Hi, my name's Colleen, and I'm on the lead committee for the Walk to End Alzheimer's this year. It is September 22nd down at Huntington Park. It starts at, the walk itself starts at 2:00 p.m. There's a brief ceremony and then the walk. It is free to walk. The gates open at noon at Huntington Park. We'll have lots of activities for family and vendors, so it's, yeah, it's free to sign up and come down, and we encourage fundraising as well. So any, if you want to, the website is ALZ.org, and it will direct you to the walk. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Colleen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We really appreciate the work that you do. I know that that horrible disease impacts not only individuals, but it really impacts all families. So I'm sure just about all of us know someone that's been touched, so thank you so much for what you do. We do have a special proclamation for the World Kung-Fu Championship medalists. How about you guys? Let's do that. Come on up here like we just did with the first group. And as you do that, I will read this proclamation. Whereas competitors from Dublin-based Ohio Wushu Academy represented the United States of the Kung-Fu, World Kung-Fu Championships in China, June 14th through 18th, including Dublin residents, Master Sen Gao Vanessa Tang, which one's Vanessa? Vanessa Tang, and Katie Lu. Is that Katie next to you? Hi, Katie. And whereas Master Gao owner and a coach of the Wushu Academy gold medal, medals, okay, you're going to have to help me. Is it Tong Baton? Tong Batron?
Tong Batron.
Tong Batron? I was close. And Guangdao Weapon. And whereas competing in the girls' age 12 to 17 division, 13-year-old Vanessa earned silver in Chong Kwan?
Yes.
All right, see? Form and bronze in Guangdao Weapon. And whereas Katie, age 12, narrowly missed defeating her competitor and was an outstanding representative of Dublin, Ohio, and the United States. And whereas more than 3,000 martial arts students from all over the world competed in the championships. And whereas to be selected, each member, team member had to compete in local and national tournaments. And whereas overall, eight competitors from Ohio Wushu Academy, in addition to Master Gao, Vanessa, and Katie, were among 250 members of the United States team, including Chembali, who won two gold medals, Chris Shepard, winner of a silver and a bronze medal, Michelle Huang, who won two silver medals, Hassan May, who won a silver medal, and Joe Josephson. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Master Sen Gao Vanessa Tang and Katie Lu for their accomplishments, and thank them for their wonderful representation of the City of Dublin and the United States in the World Kung-Fu Championship. Sign this 12th day of August 2019. So congratulate them.
Yay! (applause).
This is your shot, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, this is you.
Come on, girls. Get the picture.
Want to say a few words, ma'am?
Yes.
Competition please do. The microphone is all yours.
Excuse me, Mayor. If I might, just everyone, we'd like to express our gratitude to you, City Council, and all the other members of the government in Dublin, by presenting you and the council, and also the city manager with the small gift on her, or a massive gala, I'd like to say.
Sure, absolutely. If he doesn't hit the microphone, everybody can hear him.
Also, we would like to say we're having our fourth annual Kung-Fu Tai Chi Day here in Dublin. Without your help, we cannot make it happen. Last year, we had representation from your government. We express all due respect, and also any official.
When is that?
October 12th, this year.
October 12th of this year, and where is it?
Uh, Duffin, Scioto Park.
Scioto Park.
Yes.
October 12th, Scioto Park, what time?
9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
So hopefully throughout the day. So there, we have officially.
Okay, October the 12th. October the 12th.
Oh, my goodness. There are gifts. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thanks for everyone for your support. This is Kung-Fu master, Sen Gao. Kung-Fu, it means supreme skills from hard work. All the time I teach my students, never give up. You must have persistence to succeed, like me.
Holy crap. Wow.
Again, we invite the city.
I was going to do that. I was going to do that, but I didn't want to be showing off.
Mayor, I think you can take him.
I'm going to stay in this chair.
Again, thank you.
Absolutely.
For the city of Dublin, we continue to grow each year. We want to make Dublin the center of Chinese martial arts within our country. We have a 13 world champion. I think that we can do it, and we keep producing champions within your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic.
You know, Mayor, we would love to know how to accomplish what you want to do, so if we can help you, please let us know. That'd be a great honor for our city. It really would be.
This is a great county, a great, this is a great county, as you know, and Dublin keeps growing each year, and there's a reason. That's because of innovation, education, and desire to do things no one else has done. And I think that we can make this happen. If I could just say one more, we know that judo is in the Olympics from Japan. Taekwondo is for Korea, is in the Olympics. We would like to see Chinese martial arts in the Olympics, and we know it's going to happen. And we think we have contenders within our county and our city to make that happen. We also believe we also have a future Olympian coach. But we can make this happen within your city, given time. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And your support.
Well, you have. That's fantastic. Thank you very much. We're just thrilled to have you and have you part of our community. Thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead. You guys can, give you a minute. We are up to the citizen comment portion of the agenda. I do not have anybody that signed in, but if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak about whatever's on their mind, we'll give you up to five minutes. Just raise your hand. Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove either of the two items on the consent agenda from that agenda? Hearing no such request, I make a motion that we approve those two items.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Ann?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson? Probably want to get Chris back.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Rosa?
She's coming back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance 12-19, Ann.
Mr. Reiner?
Under the postponed items, ordinance 34-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Nexient LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office in its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, authorizing
Chris, do you need to step out?
I do. I would like to recuse myself from this based on I have a family member that is employed
execution of an economic development agreement.
Colleen.
Good evening.
there.
This was before you for first reading back, I believe, in March or April.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for a term of five years
Since then, the company has had some real estate fall through, so they have been looking
with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce, Inc., for the property located at 129 South Ice Street.
at space again, so we are back on schedule this evening for second reading.
Dana.
Well, nothing to add to this.
So Nexient, this will be a new office for the region, 200 new jobs for Central Ohio
I don't, I don't have a date specific for this to come back at this time, so we're
with an average wage of $75,000 by the time we get to the end of 2022.
still in negotiations with the chamber.
So do I need to make a, on here, it says the 26th.
The agreement tonight proposed is a five-year, 20% performance incentive on withholdings
Should I make a motion to postpone it till then, or postpone it indefinitely?
Well, we can go ahead and put it on for the 26th.
collected. It is capped at $300,000 over the term, and that term is the full five-year term.
I, and I hope that I can be back with it, so.
Okay.
And tonight, we have Colin Chapman in the audience.
Then I make a motion that we postpone this legislation until August the 26th.
I invite him to the guest podium. He's the chief delivery officer with Nexient, and he can answer any questions that you
Council, I mean, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
It looked like you were pretty far along on the conference.
Yeah.
have, or I can.
From what I could tell. What's?
Welcome, Mr. Chapman. You're getting the luck, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you for your consideration.
What's up? Well, I know.
Absolutely.
I figured I would.
Does anybody have any questions for Colin, or do you want to make a statement?
We have some more discussion to do.
Yep, we got to talk about it.
Mr. Reiner?
Where, what do we?
Yes. I can, yeah, maybe I just introduce myself quickly.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes. I'm Colin Chapman.
Mr. Rosa?
I'm chief delivery officer for Nexient.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Real quickly, tell you about our company. We are a digital services product company. We are 100% U.S.-based digital software development company. We operate in a delivery center-based model, and so what that means is all of our engineers work out of a delivery center for companies around the country. We've got 500 people in the company today. We've got a large delivery center in Ann Arbor, Michigan, right now. We're hoping to replicate, and that's about a 400-person delivery center, we're hoping to replicate something similar to that here in Dublin. And the big advantage, I think, for the local economy here is that the great thing about these jobs is most of our customers are not in Michigan or Ohio. They're in a lot in California, in New York, Minnesota, Atlanta, kind of all around the country. So as, as companies hire us, these are jobs that might be local or might be sent offshore if they weren't working with us.
No, I think it's thankful, we need to be bigger than the Ann Arbor facility, right? That's, that's part of the requirement, so I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, no, it'll be a fun rivalry between our offices, I know.
Whatever we can do to help you.
Thank you.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And probably want to get Chris back.
All right. She's coming back. Thank you. Second reading ordinance 12-19, Ann.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Nexient LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate its corporate headquarters and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I will introduce it. Jeremiah.
Good. Good evening, members of council. How are you? So this evening, we're in front of you, an economic development agreement for PDS Planning. Staff has been in discussion with them for the past several months about their wealth management firm and looking for a new home in Dublin. They're currently located in the Grandview area, and have assessed a couple of markets in Dublin, Grandview, and Worthington. Project will result in relocation of 15 jobs to Dublin in addition of seven, and the company will be required to sign a seven-year lease. And the agreement is capped at $10,000 for the term of the agreement, and also must point out, we are only incentivizing net new jobs, and they understand that, and will be accepting their 15 existing employees, but only incentivizing the seven net new. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we will see you back on August 26th.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Ordinance 36-19.
Declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tolls Career and Technical Center. This is for Block F.
I will introduce it. Ian.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we are bringing forward legislation to approve a commercial TIF on Block F of the Bridge Park Development. The parcels making up Block F are outlined on the map in front of you in yellow. As council is aware, Block F has been reviewed and approved previously by both City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. The basic plan was approved in October of 2018, while the final plat was approved by Planning Commission and City Council in January of 2019 and April of 2019, respectively. The creation of this TIF is under the provisions of Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.41, which establishes commercial TIFs. City Council has previously established a incentive district, which is a residential TIF that is layered on top of the entire Bridge Park Development, so these two layer, these two TIFs will be layered on top of each other. Block F is planned to be housed, planned to house, pardon me, the Spring Hill Suites Hotel and parking garage. Private improvements on this, on this parcel, or on these parcels are expected to be valued at approximately $10 million, which would generate about $10.2 million in TIF revenues over the course of the 30-year period. The establishment of this TIF is consistent with the other TIFs that have been approved within the Bridge Park Development, specifically for blocks B, C, A, Z, and D, and is essentially required as part of our development agreement with Crawford Hoynes in order, in order to provide the funding stream needed to finance the community facilities. Staff is recommending approval at the second reading to be held on Monday, August 26th.
Questions from council.
I just have one question. For all of these blocks, we've done valuation estimates, and I would imagine that those are coming online or have come online recently with their actuals. And will we see some actuals versus estimates to kind of get an idea of where we are in valuation for the TIF recovery?
Yeah, I think in your packet, a couple of months ago, after the Turk meeting, we had a comprehensive listing of every TIF and the values that were brought on.
What I, what I didn't know is if our estimates of our evaluations and the actuals were kind of coming together, because I know we, you know, make a lot of financial decisions based on that TIF revenue that's expected, and are, are our estimates holding true to the actuals? Is this as an estimated $10 million? It might help us to understand if we're getting, you know, if we're getting close to estimates?
Sure. We've only had really one block be valued by the county auditor, so we should see a lot more when the new valuations come out at the end of this year for next year.
But maybe it's a little premature.
But I can tell you, yeah, just in conversations with Crawford Hoynes, some of the, the original development agreement had minimum square, or had minimum values per square foot in which the minimum service payment was based, and that has escalated over time. So just based on the market demand, so from all indications, it's outperforming what we are, what we were originally expecting. But we will definitely provide follow-up information when those new values come out for every parcel within Bridge Park.
Be good prepared.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you back on August 26th. Thank you. Orderance 37-19.
Authorizing the modification of the city's debt policy.
Angel, since you're standing there.
Thank you. As council is aware, we have discussed the debt policy at a couple of different workshops. There was one held on April 3rd, and out of that meeting, council requested some metrics. I reported back to you on Monday, August 5th, the one week ago, those metrics that we were recommending. And then we also discussed actually changing the language within the debt policy to reflect our current practice with regard to allocating TIF dollars, and then also to just update the policy in and of itself to reflect the current market conditions. So this evening, we are asking for actually two things. The first is just consideration of ordinance 37-19, which is authorizing the modifications to the debt policy. Those changes are the same or are consistent with what we shared with you last week. And then I am also asking for a motion to affirm the four metrics that, as well as the frequency for council's review of the metrics. As we discussed last week, the four metrics that I brought forward included the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, general fund balance as a percentage of debt service requirements, the general fund balance as a percent of revenue over a five-year trend, and then finally, income tax-supported debt as compared to operating revenues. I know that there was some discussion about, maybe some didn't like one or two aspects of them, but there's no point, or there's nothing wrong with having more than one or two metrics, so we would report on all of these metrics. And what I was recommending within this affirmation would be that we provide an update to council, both during the CIP process, as well as when we are contemplating the issuance of new debt. There really isn't any reason to explore it outside of those two opportunities, because those are the only two times when the picture changes. Our debt schedule when we issue new debt is known from there to the end of the, the term of the bonds, so that doesn't change year to year, and it really would only change when we issue new debt or we've got a CIP plan that is being updated to reflect a changing debt structure. So with that, I would answer any questions that you have, but again, the policy itself simply addresses the items that we discussed last week.
Any questions from council?
Just a comment. Thanks very much. I, I very much like the addition of the metrics, because I think that it really helps us look at sort of over the horizon on a couple of the areas, and so I, I applaud that work, and I think these are good additions to us, and hopefully not complicated in terms of generating the, the metrics themselves.
Not at all.
So I think that's, that was well done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the placeholders. They just, they just help us to know that there is going to be the next big thing on the horizon when we can't see it yet, and it helps us to financially at least acknowledge that there's going to be a next big thing. I didn't necessarily mean for it to be in the policy, but that's probably the right place for it, so I appreciate that inclusion.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Angel. We'll see you back on August 26th. Orderance 38-19.
Adopting the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Introduction.
I will introduce it. Angel? Yes, since you're standing there.
Okay, thank you. Council has had a couple of different works, workshops to discuss our capital improvement program covering the years 2020 through 2024. You can see those dates outlined in front of you. We are sitting here this evening requesting first reading of the ordinance to adopt the CIP, with second reading two weeks from today, and I'm sorry, that date is August 26th, not the 22nd. Coming out of our discussion last week on the CIP, council had requested us include funding for the Franklin Street extension, so we did, we were able to accommodate design of that roadway system in 2021 at a cost of $400,000, and construction of the roadway in 2022 at a cost of about $2.6 million. So we have incorporated that into the CIP that is proposed in front of you this evening. So in total, what you saw last week, this did not change. Our maintenance program as part of the CIP is $79,460,000, while our enhancements, new infrastructure and assets total almost $120 million. So with that, we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? Kathy?
Angel, do you have a chart that shows of the capital improvements, what, what will be cash-funded, what will be TIF-funded, what will be debt-funded? And I don't need it tonight, but I think that summary level would, I, I wasn't sure I had it in some of the materials in that way, but.
I don't have it in the presentation this evening, but we will make sure to include it for second reading.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Jane?
No, just want to thank you for Dana and Angel, and reconsidering in council also for that inclusion of the Franklin Street extension. I think, I think with the opening of the bridge and giving the opportunity for more walkability within the district, more access to the parking garage, I think all of those things are just one more step forward to trying to make sure that the West Side is as energized as the East, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. So thank you.
Anything else? Christina, you got something?
Just really quickly, I just wanted to say thanks for adjusting the process a little bit. I think the process went really well this year, and was very informative, gave, I think, at least for me anyway, a really good opportunity to spend some time with it, and I, I just I will introduce it. Angel, yes, since you're standing there.
Okay, thank you. Council has had a couple of different workshops to discuss our capital improvement program covering the years 2020 through 2024. You can see those dates outlined in front of you. We are sitting here this evening requesting first reading of the ordinance to adopt the CIP with second reading two weeks from today, and I'm sorry, that date is August 26, not the 22. Coming out of our discussion last week on the CIP, council had requested us include funding for the Franklin Street extension. So, we did, we were able to accommodate design of that roadway system in 2021 at a cost of $400,000, and construction of the roadway in 2022 at a cost of about $2.6 million. So, we have incorporated that into the CIP that is proposed in front of you this evening. So, in total, what you saw last week, this did not change. Our maintenance program as part of the CIP is $79,460,000, while our enhancements, new infrastructure and assets total almost $120 million. So with that, we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? Kathy?
Angel, do you have a chart that shows of the capital improvements, what will be cash-funded, what will be TIF-funded, what will be debt-funded? And I don't need it tonight, but I think that summary level would, I wasn't sure I had it in some of the materials in that way, but...
I don't have it in the presentation this evening, but we will make sure to include it for second reading.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Jane?
No, just want to thank you for Dana and Angel, and reconsidering in council also for that inclusion of the Franklin Street extension. I think with the opening of the bridge and giving the opportunity for more walkability within the district, more access to the parking garage, I think all of those things are just one more step forward to trying to make sure that the west side is energized as the east. I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Anything else? Christina, you got something?
Just really quickly, I just wanted to say thanks for adjusting the process a little bit. I think the process went really well this year and was very informative, gave, I think, at least for me anyway, a really good opportunity to spend some time with it. And I just really appreciate the changes and the additional metrics, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Christina. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Angel. We'll see you back then on August 26. I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to address ordinances 39-19, 40-19, and 41-19 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christina. Ann?
Mr. Ludo?
I need to recuse myself on this.
Okay, hang on, time now.
I chair Air Quality Development Authority, so as such, I was advised earlier that I need to leave.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
All right, so I guess, Ann, you got to read all of these.
Titles, ordinance 3919, Determining to Proceed with the Acquisition, Construction, Improvements or Certain Public Improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio, in Cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. 4019 is Levying Special Assessments for the Purpose of Acquiring, Constructing, Improving Certain Public Improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio in Cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. And ordinance 4119, Authorizing an Improving and Energy Project Cooperative Agreement, Buy-in Between the City of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 970 High Ridge Associates LLC, and Petros Pace Finance LLC, a Special Assessment Agreement, Buy-in Between the City of Dublin, Ohio, the County Treasurer, Franklin County, Ohio, Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 970 High Ridge Associates LLC, Petros Pace Finance LLC, and Related Agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvements projects.
Thank you, Ann. I will introduce all three. Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. So, as you know, city council continues to support our strategies and tactics to ensure that we have competitive office product and supported in our Dublin Corporate Area Plan. This is another PACE project that you've seen. This will be our fifth that we have had in the city, which shows that building ownership sees value in long-term investment in the community. And so, this particular project is for 5161 Emerald Parkway, and utilizing a PACE assessment financing totaling a little over $1.9 million to make a series of improvements that are highlighted in the memo, including LED lighting, high-efficiency HVAC, and building automation controls. This project, as Mike has referenced himself, did receive some financial support from the Ohio Air Quality Development Authority, which is unique. This is the first project of the five total that has received that particular financing, and the uniqueness of that is highlighted in the memo. But happy to answer any questions you have about this project, and go from there.
Jeremiah, everything about this PACE financing is positive, right? It's just a mechanism for funding these high-efficiency improvements, which, you know, helps everybody, environmentally sensitive, and helps reduce the operating costs of the businesses and so on and so forth. Can we work with these folks about the practice of the execution of this? It is very cumbersome. When we have to have three different ordinances to say, "You can get financing from this person," it just feels very cumbersome. Can we help them identify perhaps some ways that these can be, and make it simpler for them?
Yeah.
And simpler for every municipality, ourselves included, that have to approve these mechanisms so that they can have access to this funding?
Yeah, so I would agree with that assessment. However, I would say that the Ohio Revise Code specifically lays out the process, so I would defer to our bond counsel and legal about how we might go about approaching the right entities to change that.
Because I'm sure they don't want us wasting time and resources to do these. You know, the hallmark of this is efficiency, right? And this is a very inefficient way to get something that really isn't as complicated accomplished.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and again, it's just talking, really legislature, right? And so, changing some of that. And then Bricker is sort of the authority on this legislation.
Maybe that's something that, you know, we can, Comar or somebody can make some representation to, because, you know, if we're struggling, I don't know what this cost the city to put together all of these legal documents, but you extrapolate that to every community around central Ohio, that gets to be a burdensome number, and if we could, if the Central Ohio Managers and Mayors Association could come together and say, "If you made these four changes, we could do this by one act of any governing body in a municipality," and we would be even more true to our intent for high efficiency.
Yeah, and I will certainly also take that to the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority as a board member of that, as communities that use financing and talk with that, because the other communities that you see, Bexley and others that are using it, are certain, something we need to...
And I'm sure we have the expertise on staff that could help streamline that process and give them a lot of direction. Hopefully, it wouldn't be a cumbersome endeavor to make.
I agree with how that conversation is going.
Any other questions? Jane, you have something?
I have a question, Jeremiah. You know, I was reading about the program through the state of Ohio, too. Are there any other programs or advantages when you create a regional special improvement district other than participating in PACE? In other words, once you create this special improvement district, and I'm assuming it's under the whole umbrella of state of Ohio as well as Franklin County authority, and I know energy is a piece and part of it, so I'm just asking, is there an umbrella that makes this special improvement district offer another advantage besides energy?
So, central Ohio has a specific ESID, right, which is covered by Columbus Franklin County, and each of those particular jurisdictions, and we talked about this prior to the creation of the regional ESID, whether each individual community would choose to create their own ESID, or if it would be a regional, and we chose a regional in nature, and then as projects were brought to the individual communities, we would simply ask the petition to join the, that parcel to join the ESID. Does that make sense?
Yes, so you're only joining it for energy efficiency. In other words, it's limited to just this piece.
Right, and so the background, part of that discussion, too, was we didn't want many communities to go create the ESID and not ever have any projects and go through the rigamarole, and so we just created the regional, and then as each community, we went too forward with them, and so not every central Ohio community has had an ESID or a PACE project.
Okay.
So we'll just kind of add those in. I think Bexley would have been the last municipality to join in.
Okay, but it's truly only for, it's really only developed for PACE, is what you're saying? Is for the...
As I understand it, yes, as the statute requires.
Okay.
But I would defer to legal on that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all set up for initially for now.
Yeah.
Anything else? We good all around? Okay, so we'll see you back on August 26 on that. Jennifer, does Mike have to stay out for the next two as well?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the record should just reflect that Mike is still out of the room. Introduction public here in our resolutions, resolution 43-19.
Approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvements projects under Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 1710.
I will introduce it. Jeremiah?
Nothing additional, one additional thing, just maybe to Jane's question. Part of that function of the creating the ESID, doing a regional, it allows for just individual parcels to join rather than putting an umbrella over the entire community. So that's why these are going by individual parcels, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, Ann?
Sorry, Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Resolution 44-19?
Approving the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
I will introduce it. Jeremiah, anything? You guys, any questions on this one? Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I make a motion we remove resolution 42-19, the preliminary plat for Riviera West from the table and schedule it for a hearing on August 26, our next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Wow, I'm going to curse us. We're going to do something to fall off the tracks here, but we are laser flying through this agenda. We're up to staff comments, Dan.
Good evening, members of council. I only have two items tonight. The first one, actually, I'm going to have Michelle come up and speak to, we have a, had a memo in your packet relative to your retreat goals, and just need a little guidance on a couple matters there, so Michelle's going to speak to those.
Good evening, members of councils. So before you, as Dana stated, is an update on your council goal-setting items, which includes your visionary goals, your policy topics from 2019, and then there were several carryovers from 2018. So, just any comments you may have related to this, but we had four that we believe are completed, and we just wanted to get a nod from council as to whether they think these are, you think these are or not. I'll run through them real quickly. The first one is there was an adoption of a revised budget calendar on April 3. The second was seasonal employee pay and benefits, which came before the Administrative Committee of Council. We believe that all the questions were answered during this meeting, and there wasn't any follow-up out of the Administrative Committee, so we believe that's complete as well.
Correct.
The third one is the parkland fee in lieu, and this was simply changing our method of appraising parkland on an individual basis instead of once a year, and that was brought forward as an ordinance. We believe that one is completed. And then the fourth one is development review process. This was the Bridge Street District Development Review Process, which again was amended by ordinance in April. And then there's one other item that we would ask that it be held off until 2020, and that is the housing topic. And if council recalls, this was really a housing market review. We wanted an inventory of your current housing stock. How does that compare to other communities and what may be trending out there, and then look at, to see if there's any gaps. Morpsy is undertaking a really comprehensive regional housing study right now. We have contributed towards the cost of that, and they will do a deep dive into Dublin's housing market as part of that. We have a staff member that will be part of the working group for that, so we just asked that that should be completed in early, mid-2020, so we wouldn't want to hold off on that discussion until...
So we'll take these one at a time. Does anyone not believe that the budget process, the seasonal employees, the parkland fee, and the development review process, those items can be treated as though they are completed? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, so those four items are completed. Isn't everybody okay with us waiting for the Morpsy housing study thing that we're waiting on? So that will remain open.
Is the impact, educational impact, is that going to be part of that Morpsy study?
I'm not really, impact as far as like on number of homes that could contribute to the schools.
Our goal was housing, high costs, and impact on schools.
So how many families with children might come out of that? I don't know if that was part of the parameters of that. We can ask?
No, I think really what we were going to do was, or what we would recommend is let their housing study play out. Let's see how that comes out, and then if we wanted to add to that, probably, probably use the same consultant because they've collected data to then do a deeper dive for us. So it's, so in other words, let's ride this consultant project out on Morpsy, and then let's see if we can leverage that to dive deeper into some of these other things.
Perhaps we could reach out to the schools and maybe glean some information from them on how they do those assessments, so that when we get, I'm assuming every, every community that Morpsy is doing the study for would be interested in that, and maybe we could reach out to the school system and say, "What are the things, you know, give us your ingredients. You need these five things to make this determination," and just make sure that Morpsy's collecting those five things, so that we don't have to go back and try to find some missing data in order to talk about the impact to the schools with them.
Yeah, that's a great point. We have some, some information that we've collected and taken a look at over the years relative to our own housing situation and, you know, available land, that kind of analysis, and we could share that with them.
I would suspect that the...
Schools have shared with us some of their analysis that we could probably pass along as well.
I would suspect there's some ingredient list from the Ohio Department of Education or something that says we measure these improvements on these five criteria, or eight, or whatever the heck the number is, but, and then if we have that criteria, it's really easy to measure.
We can reach out to them and see if they have something with that, and if Morpsy can then put that in as part at this point.
But the fact we want to be sensitive to their interests.
Sure.
You'd certainly would think we would agree.
You know, what this means to everything, if it doesn't mean something good for our schools, then it doesn't mean something good.
Right. Is that it, Michelle?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Dana, I think you said you had two items, and I had one.
I only have one other item, and that's that I want to...
I'm sorry, can I back up one thing?
Oh, here we come, coming off my rails.
On the sandwich boards, can we go ahead and put that on the next Community Development Committee meeting? I think that it's, I'd like to go ahead and get that done, and I don't think that's a really long conversation. We talked about whether or not we would do the facade program and include the sandwich boards into that, and I don't want to, I'd like to come out of the gate next spring when we, sandwich board season, and have a plan in place.
The only thing I would recommend about that is some level of discussion or engagement with a few of the business owners downtown or in historic Dublin about that. I've had a couple calls on that. Either, I guess either we can try to quickly, informally survey them on that and/or encourage them to maybe come to the committee meeting and have, and give you some thoughts.
Or give some direction to staff to go to them and have those meetings, say, "This is, we are or are not going to do this, and it is going, these criteria are going to apply, whatever, what do you think?" And then gather their feedback and then be ready to go.
And if I remember correctly, I think that was assigned to ARB as well, and I'm not sure to what degree they've heard that, or they may have received an informational memo regarding that, so we'll check on that, see where...
Kyle was working on it, so he might, if we could reach out to him, Kreidler, he might be our best source of status.
Yeah.
The other item, Michelle, along with that, was where we talked about putting signage along construction fences, and I don't know where that's at. I think it went to ARB, too, did it? Or are we?
No, actually, I think the direction was, it was allowable to do, and we had approached, I've approached, as an example, Crawford-Hoyne about that, who has some ongoing construction sites that they could apply that to, and encouraged it. They have not chosen to do that yet. We may have some projects in the future we're involved in that we may be able to do that. So, that's kind of where it was at.
Do we need, do we need new verbiage?
New legislation?
Outside?
I guess if the idea is you want to force it, you would.
Yeah, I think that we contemplated doing code language on that, and I thought planning was working on some code language as well to work that into a formal process.
Yeah, if not, you know, that would be a good thing to send to our committee and keep the ball rolling.
But the direction from council was it was okay to go ahead and pursue that pending, and I just want you to know...
Okay, so it's a done deal.
We've been encouraging it, so I don't want you to think we forgot about it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
That's all, sorry.
Dana, back to you.
Okay, yeah, so the other item I have is I just want to recognize and congratulate Angel. This is her last meeting with us. We'll celebrate her service with the city, some eight-plus years. A great service to the city and the Dublin community Thursday evening. That'll be from 4:00 to 7:00. Yeah, 4:00 to 7:00, and just want to thank her for all the great work that she's done, being a great teammate that she's been, a great advisor and great partner to all of the leadership team and all the staff, and a great leader to her team as well. We've got truly a finance team that's just second to none, and I just, you know, can't say enough to thank her for that, and I won't take the time now to do all of that, because we're going to do that. We're going to roast her Thursday night, probably. Anyway, no, just want to, though, publicly, as our residents watch this, just look at you and say thank you for everything, and I'm sure, and council appreciates all your great service as well.
Thanks, Dana. I have a lot.
That's all I have.
I'm fairly confident that topic will come up at Roundtable as we move forward here, Angel, so. With that, committee reports, P and Z. Jane?
The only thing I want to bring up to council concerning planning and zoning is that I would request that we schedule a combined planning and zoning and ARB commission meeting with council a couple of times a year. I think so often we have discussions about what we'd like to see happen, and the commission members are trying very hard to carry out the work of council, but these communications that might happen a couple of times a year, two or three, whatever you think is appropriate, I think gives them an opportunity to ask us some questions. We can share some of our thoughts. They can discuss with us some of the problems they run across and ask advice on what they think council might like to have happen. Even though they're an objective committee, they always are always keeping in mind the community plan, our vision principles, and all that sort of thing, and constant communication with us, or continued communication with us, I think is really beneficial to help them do their work. So, I would like to request at least that we place on our calendar in the fall an opportunity to meet with planning and zoning and ARB, and then once a year, I think it's a good idea for council, this isn't planning and zoning, to meet with a group, a group meeting with our commissions, our boards, to see if they have any questions of council. So that's my ask.
When would we go about doing that?
to meet with Planning and Zoning and ARB. And then, once a year, I think it's a good idea for council, this isn't planning and zoning, to meet with a group, a group meeting with our commissions, our boards, to see if they have any questions with council. So that's, that's my ask.
When would we go about doing that?
I don't know. We could get together with the city manager's office and see if we can work that out.
Why don't we, we'll work with clerk of council with Ann and suggest some dates and perhaps an agenda. I know one of the items that, in your economic development strategy, suggests such a joint session around processes as well. So maybe an overarching conversation, but also a little bit of workshop, roll-up-the-sleeves kind of, kind of review as well. So we'll-
That'd be great. And also a little informal time just to see if they have any questions for us, Q and A time.
Sure.
You got anything else, Jane, for P and Z?
No, that's all.
Okay. Admin, Chris?
Nothing at this time.
Community Development Committee, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Finance, Mike. Public Services Committee, Christina?
Yeah, we met on August 7th to talk about the parking management pilot program. So let me just go over that really briefly with you. Staff provided us an update on where they were, and Jane and John and I sort of laid out what some of the concerns that we had were. And what we kind of walked away was, with, was that we wanted staff to ensure that we had sort of clearly defined objectives and goals for the pilot program. We wanted to be sure that the historic Dublin businesses were contacted and sort of thoroughly talked to about what it is and what their thoughts are about it. So the, so the update from staff was the Bridge Park East mobile parking payment system would be for the on-street parking spaces along Riverside Drive, Longshore Street, and Bridge Park Avenue, and that the part of historic Dublin that would be included in that would be north of High Street. So that's like 16 spaces on North High Street, but not South High Street. However, we instructed staff that we would like them to engage not just the historic Dublin owners on the north side, but also on the south side. That was really important to us. So basically, what we decided to do is to bring back to council our recommendation, which is the implementation of the mobile parking management program pilot on the east side of the river, which would be the Bridge Street District part, and implementation of a pilot on the west side in Historic District. But that, that second piece would be absolutely contingent upon conducting an education and engagement outreach to each of the Historic District business and property owners, so that we can be sure that they have a satisfactory level of buy-in. If they do not, we would take that part out of the pilot altogether, but that they would be included in the conversation so they have full understanding of what we're doing and where it's going. We could add them at a later time if they wanted to be added at a later time, if they decided initially they didn't want to be in the pilot. And then we also told staff that we really need to make sure that at the end of the pilot, that we're sort of circled back in, all those metrics are brought to us, that it's not just a, oh, we're going to pilot this, and then the pilot just keeps kind of going just because it's already there. And staff seemed very fine with everything that we had come up with. So John or Jane, do you want to chime in and?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, Christine, is that when we talked about a well-defined objective for the pilot program on Bridge Park especially, since we're recommending that that goes forward, that a conversation needs to be included on the use of the curb space for not only parking, but for all the other mobile activities that might occur, whether we have a shuttle, where that shuttle might land, or stop, where Uber and Lyft handicap spaces don't exist on, on the curb over there on Bridge Park. So it's, it's not only just the parking, but it's also just having a conversation about how they use the spaces over there.
So we're looking for the balance of council to chime back in and let us know your thoughts.
Do we have a, remind me, that, do we have a document that lays out those objectives?
That's what we're asking specifically for them to come back with, so that we can very verbally share that and be, you know, iterative, and we can express that very clearly to those who are going to be in the pilot, and those who may want to be in the pilot.
So the committee's okay with moving ahead before that's defined? So you're saying bring that back while you first?
Yeah.
And then when that comes back, if that makes, then proceed as you're, okay, so that's sort of a two-step process?
Yes.
Is that right?
Okay.
So we would wait then to see what those objectives are and your recommendation from?
Yeah, I think the idea was they would bring that back to one of our public service committee meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're kind of looking for the head nods here, so we know how to proceed it then, when they bring us those updates.
Sounds like you are all over it.
Okay, great. One other item that we talked about was shared use past snow clearing priority, particularly in the Historic District area. One of the concerns was some of the areas that we do, that we do clear, because they're adjacent to city property, or there's a, there's sort of a criteria list for how they're cleared. But there might be private property owned in between the two spots where the city is clearing, so people might be able to walk up to a point, and then they got to trudge through the snow before they can get to the next clear point. We didn't feel that it was necessary for the city to take on clearing that hunk of path between those two points, but that rather it made more sense for us to do a communication campaign, sort of how we do the rake-it-right, similar to that for the folks in that area, to encourage them to clear their pathways for folks to be able to walk. And if there are any folks that are not able to clear their pathways, that would give us maybe an opportunity to have a conversation with them and create a volunteer opportunity for some, some folks to help them get those paths cleared when there's snow on them. So it's more just an update than anything else.
Perfect, great.
That's it.
Thank you, Kristi. Coda, Kathy?
No, the only thing I can say is, while unfortunately Angel is leaving here, I know the Coda team is very excited to have her join, so next board meeting, she will be there. So I look forward to seeing her there.
I said, thanks for rubbing that in. Now, I'm just-
No, I mean, that's the only Coda update I can bring. They're on recess this month, so you missed the month of recess, Angel.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Nothing this time.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
Yes, we had executive session on the first, and then I know that Kathy and Jane were able to attend the Hyperloop here in Dublin, the POD, so thank you both for coming to that. It was, I think, a great experience for those that were able to attend, and residents came out and the business community, and, you know, there was a video that was presented by them that really helped us understand the impact that that Hyperloop is going to have, and that it isn't really a futuristic technology, but that shovels will be in the ground in the Mideast within the next 14 months to start constructing it. So followed up, next day, I went to represent at the Columbus Metropolitan Club luncheon, where Jay, the CEO of Virgin Hyperloop One, presented there as well. And we were, we were well represented in terms of the strategy of the initial phases that would be constructed. So really appreciate the support that we've received for this, and it's certainly an exciting time. Other than that, we had a board meeting on the eighth, and lots of the Morpsy studies and things, hopefully we'll be getting results back. I don't know if we'll get a total dump at the end, but I think we'll start to see various trickle, information trickle in along the way. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. The LUC, that's Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
I don't know, can I report?
How about Northwest 33 Corridor Group?
Yeah, I can report. We had a meeting last Friday, and we continue to have discussions on the overlay district that I know, you recall, we've spoken about before. I think the actual work of what's in that overlay has been pretty well completed, and now it is being discussed throughout different townships, et cetera, so forth. So that has been moving along. We had a good discussion about the 33 interchange, which I know we have talked a lot about that important piece of infrastructure as part of the corridor. So we had a good update on where that is, and I know programming and grants are out, so we'll see and hope that moves ahead. And then the final thing that I would add, and then see if Jane wishes to add any into that, is that along that work, ODOT is going to be conducting a long-range transportation study up and down that 33 corridor, and certainly Dublin will be represented on that, so completed through 2020. So there's a lot of good, both short-term activity and some, some good long-term planning coming out of that work and partnership. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Kathy. Jane, you want to add anything?
The only thing I'd add to that is that, that they had, they had asked that they give us, give all of the members a depiction of all the improvements that are going to happen all along the 33 corridor and industrial parkway, because as we hear them, they come along in bits and pieces, and you don't get an entire picture. So when we get that, we'll bring that back to council, so you get a good look at that.
Great, thank you. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yeah, we had a new art show open up on the August the 6th called Cypress Park Sandstone Studies in Burn Orange. And then I want to remind you that the 25th Anniversary Party for Fields of Corn with Osage oranges, which is internationally acclaimed in all the major art circles that review these kind of things, is going to happen September 28th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, right in the middle of those sculptural items. So if you get a chance, it might be an interesting thing to come out and see. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
Washington Township, my friends in the back, Mr. Richter, Chief, you guys got anything? Okay. Dublin Bridges, Jane?
Nothing.
Council Roundtable, we'll just stay with you.
Well, especially want to say personally, thank you, Angel, for everything that you've given the city, and especially for all the teaching you've done to help us understand the complexities of municipal financing. We're blessed to have had you here, and blessed to have known you, and we'll do whatever we can to support you as you go forward, and we're excited for you, and we'll miss you deeply. So, thank you. As for Roundtable, after the sad episodes that have happened in El Paso and Dayton, and our sister, and one of our neighbor, neighbor cities, Dayton, I wonder if this council and this city could maybe consider a declaration or reaffirmation of support to them, and maybe some serious consideration of looking at our position and reaffirming or supporting the U.S. Conference of Mayors in their work in trying to, to find some way that bipartisan gun control, no, I shouldn't say gun control, but gun legislation that would make our, our country safer in some ways. The complexity includes mental health work and conversations among the community. I think of, at the very least, a declaration of our support to the city of Dayton, and that we, we give our sympathies, and that we'll do whatever we can as a city to try to bring forward the healthiest and most deliberative kind of conversation to the table that we can. So I would just ask us to maybe think about that as a consideration from this council.
Anything else? Kathy?
Thank you, Jane. Angel, I'll add my congratulations too. I mean, there's, I can think of few people that would fit in the circle that have had as big an impact as that you've had on the city in a positive way and moving it forward, and we're all incredibly grateful for, for your work. And as Jane said, very excited about what we know, we'll continue to do great things in central Ohio, and I look forward to the opportunity to still get to work with you on the Coda board. So thank you very much for all of that. I, again, the Hyperloop thing, I will add to Chris's point. I was so excited about the size of the group of folks that showed up to see that. I think there were, I don't know if I heard any official numbers, but, you know, I would guess 100 and a quarter to 150 people at 7:30 in the morning, all excited about, as we heard earlier from the gentleman, one of the things Dublin likes to do is be first and foremost, and this is just such an example. So thanks to Chris and her work on that, that was great. Congratulations to Michelle for her article on engagement in the National Civic Review. That was a great article, and thank you very much for that. And then I just had one quick question. In the materials for update, there was the CIP report, again, another example of, of things that I think are quite helpful to us. And in there, I know we talked last time about park maintenance, and I didn't see in there that we've spent just about half so far of what our park maintenance budget, we're anticipating we're going to spend all of that? I'm getting a head nod for that. That's, that's great. And then from the stormwater maintenance, I saw that so far we haven't spent any in there. Is that just a pure timing thing in terms, and so we anticipate that we'll spend that as well? And I only ask those questions because as we're finalizing the CIP, I know a couple, those two areas were important conversations of, do we have sufficient funding, et cetera, so forth? So I'm getting head nods from there, so I was just tracking. So that has been a very useful report, I think, as we reflect on what our actual spends are and what they might be. So thank you for that, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Is that it, Kathy?
Yes.
John?
I want to say a few words. I've got a board meeting, so I'm going to be a little late coming to your going-away party, which, but, you know, last month, we celebrated the 50th anniversary of humanity going to the moon. When Kennedy proposed this idea, he was sort of talking through his hat. You know, this was a long-term vision. At the time, computers to run the space capsule would have been as large as three refrigerators, and would hardly fit into a space capsule. But with the help of MIT and smaller chips, we were able to develop and run a system with, that really ended up leading to the, some of the breakthroughs in modern technology in Silicon Valley. Some folks at the time were looking at the stars, and some folks were wallowing in the mud at Woodstock, some of which we can all remember. Angel, this, I believe, is your last meeting with us, and I want to thank you for your knowledge, which allowed us to launch Dublin to a complete new era. The Bridge Street project was derided by a few who said we would bankrupt the city, wreck our financial standing, and this would be the complete ruination of the city of Dublin. You patiently, with great grace, explained over and over to our financial detractors the economic power of our city for the past five years. Much like the monumental moon landing, you helped launch Dublin, now recognized by three outside firms as one of the foremost trendy, financially savvy, smart cities in America. Thank you for the grace you displayed with those negative detractors who challenged your skills as our financial director. We all wish you well in your new job at Coda, and they acquired a brilliant team member. All the citizens of Dublin are in your debt for your leadership and knowledge, so thank you.
Is that it, John? That's it? Thank you. Mike?
There's not much more to add after all that, soliloquially, but as you know, I've appreciated working with you as finance chair, probably a large part of your eight years here. And we're losing a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, and really, the Bridge Park development, you carried a lot of water on that project, and it was extremely complex. And I can't thank you enough for helping shepherd us all through that. So thank you, and good luck at Coda. I know you'll do well, and once again, thank you for all your service and your future service. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Thank you. A quick reminder to everyone that school starts Wednesday. I hope everyone will be very watchful in their driving and paying attention to the school zones that are very clearly marked with lots of flashing lights. Michelle, thanks for the article that you wrote. I really think that you chose an excellent example of human-centered design through aging in place. Both you and Christine worked tirelessly to bring all those people together and all these partners together to really create something that's very unique. When I talk with people about Forever Dublin, they're floored by what we're doing. So I wanted to just say thank you, and thank you for sharing that with others in the hopes that other communities can take up that banner and, and work to really help their aging population. Because God willing, we'll all get there. Angel, thank you is totally and completely inadequate. I remember coming onto council and thinking, gosh, this is really overwhelming. And in our, you know, conversations just first walking through the door, I realized that it wasn't going to be overwhelming, because I have the support of staff like you and the rest of staff. You will be missed, you're not far, thank goodness. Can't wait to see what you're going to do for Coda. They are incredibly lucky to have you, and we are incredibly blessed to have had you here. So I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We'll miss you, but we're so happy for you. You'll be amazing.
Thank you, Christina. Chris?
Yeah, thanks, Angel. I, it has been a joy and a privilege to get to work alongside you, and I appreciate your patience and my extensive questions, and just the demeanor that you have in navigating those. I certainly have learned a lot from you in terms of how to navigate those questions and answers, and although I believe that, that things happen in the public realm, you have been very patient with me for that. I don't want, I have always been convinced that if conversations happen offline, the public doesn't know that we've had them, and so I appreciate the, your willingness to partner with me in trying to fulfill those beliefs, and just your, just the disposition and the grace that you handle those. So certainly do appreciate that. Coda is getting a great get, and I think they know it, that's why they came after you. So we didn't keep you a very good secret, and it got out, and now so do you. So best wishes, and we know you won't be far, you'll still be a Dublin resident, so I'll hope to see you at the grocery store.
Thanks, Chris. First, just to Dana and your staff, that thanks for everything you guys did with the Irish Festival. When you think about the golf tournament, then the Fourth of July, and then the Irish Festival, three months in a row, we bring in excess of a quarter million people into a residential community. Keep them safe, move them around, show them a good time.
Keep them safe, move them around, show them a good time, and then let them go back home with positive impressions of our community, and your staff does, just does an unbelievably exceptional job. It is really extraordinary what this staff is able to pull off, three months in a row with three huge events. Most communities don't have one, and you and your team pull off three in a row. So thank you to everybody for everything that you did. You make us look just exceedingly fantastic, which this community is. To Angel, my first exposure to a finance director was Marcia Grigsby, back in 1996, when I sat down there. I had no idea where the bathroom was in this place, I didn't know anything, but I think everybody that interacted with Marcia would agree, as she eventually became our city manager, that there is no one that could meet her professionalism and her extraordinary talent and expertise in her field. And when Marcia moved over to that seat, everybody sort of wondered, oh my God, now what are we going to do? I can tell you, Angel, you, you not only met the standard that Marcia had set, but you exceeded it, which I don't think any of us thought was even possible to have happen. But you did, in so many different ways. Your professionalism, the thoroughness of your knowledge, your ability, your personality, your ability to, that calm under pressure, the ability to respond and to answer questions with almost flawless expertise, and you have, I didn't think it was possible, but you have redefined what a finance director should strive to be. You know, there's a rule that I try to get my kids to follow in life, and I think if you follow it, generally, you're going to do pretty well. If you can say when you leave somewhere, you left it in a better condition than where you found it, then you will succeed in life. And with the legacy that Marcia left, I didn't know it would be possible for someone to come in, replace her, be there for eight years, and leave it in a better position than as you found it, but you have. And, and this community, this council, I believe owes you a tremendous debt of gratitude for what you guided us through, and a lot of challenging, challenging issues, and unbelievably complicated arrangements and financial circumstances, and you have led us and guided us and counseled us with just about flawless perfection, and I greatly appreciate that for us as a council, and even more importantly than that, this community, you are leaving better off than as you found it. So thank you for everything that you have done for us, and I guess we'll see you on Thursday, and we obviously wish you the very best with your future endeavors. I can tell you this, it is with absolute certainty, you're going to be exceptionally successful no matter where you go. So with that, we adjourn.